Oh, Councilor Landrell first and then we'll...
Well, and just one other thing that I'll be very honest. I spent several hours going through the budget and I wish, I really, in the future, I think we need to have direction. I did not realize that anything under 5,000 would be not looked at, so I wasted a lot of time, you know what I mean? And I would really appreciate it in the future that we be told that this is the parameters. Don't cut anything under $5,000 because in essence it is a time waster. And that, and I, that would have saved me a lot of issue because then I just would have been looking for big numbers and that would be, that was my first comment. The second comment, and I know, so, so a lot of these little items which I really think are significant and they're items that I think we should be looking at because I think there's some extra fluff there, but that's beside the, the point. You know, and, you know, I, for example, the YASTA, the, the grant, it's a no-brainer. So, the 2,500 that we were going to pay to Destination, which doesn't exist anymore, where's that go? Where obviously still sits in the budget, so YASTA is getting an extra $2,500, is that's my understanding. I don't think that's right. I mean, to be perfectly honest, I mean, we, that was why we put the 2,500 in there. I mean, I'd rather see that 2,500, I know we're not talking numbers under 5,000, but I am going to talk this number, because here we are cutting 5,000 from grants to organizations and here's 2,500 that we're giving to an organization that doesn't, that we weren't going to do. You know, to me, that money should go back somewhere, you know, and that's, like, I'm annoyed because I wasted time. And I really did. This took two or three hours of my time and I could have, my age, I could have done a better thing.
Go ahead, CAO.
The recommendation from staff was, I explained to you the process that we used. You don't have to accept the recommendation. You can do whatever you like. You can, I mean, you spent, your time was well-spent, in my opinion, and frankly, it showed that you spent the time because of the detail that you went into in your email. And, and we appreciate that. It's just when we went through it, and we've gone through it several times, we took, took a different approach. Doesn't mean that your approach is wrong and not, not suggesting that. It's just that that's how we did it and you can make any adjustments you want as a councilor. You can, you can disagree with, with us regularly and routinely. What I explained was the approach we took and so, not intended to, to suggest you wasted your time or to diminish in any way the, the effort that you put in.
I did the same thing. I, I went through, I went through line by line too and, okay, Councilor Mooney, you're up.
I've got no problem with doing the, since that money was dedicated towards Destination Southwest, taking the $2,500 and moving it over to the column to make that 502,500. Like, that's, that's what the money was for, was Destination, so if Destination's not there anymore, there's an opportunity, there's 2,500 bucks, right? There's part of a, there's a quarter of a cent of a tax rate or, you know, fifth of a cent of a tax rate.
Good, thank you. Councilor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship, or you could, since we're, everybody's putting their one cent worth in, perhaps you could take that $2,500 and put it into Community in Bloom for trees, for more trees, whatever, right? For, for more grooming, whatever. I mean, pardon?
In the parks?
Yeah, in the parks. I mean, YASTA is, we've already funded that. The 25 was taken out for Destination. This is going to add to everybody's flavor in the town of Yarmouth, the $2,500. Everybody's going to enjoy that. It's going to, it's going to work really well for, for the volunteers to have an extra $2,500 to work with. And Lord only knows, there's, there's lots of trees in the Water Street area and Main Street area that some don't have enough trees in the Main Street area. With their plan that they have this year, it's a big plan that Community in Bloom has and for beautifying the downtown Main Street and what have you, I mean, that, that extra cash. And even if we don't use it, which I know we will, it, it's always can be rolled over, all right? That's just my thought.
Thank you. Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Jeff and Jerry have done a marvelous job. That's your job. That's, I feel, I feel this much bad about, about diving into it and telling you, telling you what to put in, what to put out. It's like, it's like going to a doctor and then questioning the doctor about the prescription that he's writing you. It's very difficult, very difficult to, to, to say, yep, you deserve it, no, you don't. All, as long as you don't dip too, too deeply into the reserves, I'm happy. You know how I feel about dipping in reserves. One other point, I do, I would consider looking into reducing grants to organizations, maybe by another $5,000. I'm sure that can be done. And that's all, that's all I have too, that's all I have as a, as a suggestion, as a further suggestion. Otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with everything that you've put together. Well done, thank you.
Now, Councilor Landrell?
Well, one thing that we haven't explored and, not that I'm battling poor YASTA, I'm not, we've got to bear in mind that as a town, we fund tourism hugely. Not only do we give a 60,000, we also have the room levy, which is another chunk of change, which is around 70,000, I believe you have in the budget. So totally, this community's putting 130,000 into tourism, which is a lot of money. When we were blowing up Destination, Louis Catino, who's a colleague of Jeff's with Windsor, and Louis, I've got the highest respect for, he's excellent, and conversation with Louis in the meeting and afterwards, I really think that we should be looking at expanding that room levy. I really think we've got to rethink it. I think we should move the room levy to include all accommodations, whether it is a bed and breakfast, whether it's, because right now it's limited. And this is one thing that Louis felt would be more equitable and fair, that you suddenly, you spread it around. You know, room is a room and the levy should be looked at as, and I'm not suggesting for this budget, but I'm suggesting as a dollar value to help reduce the amount of money we are putting into, into groups such as Yarmouth and Acadian Shores. That, I think sustainability of organizations are something we need to be looking at and dollars saved there can go into the sidewalks that Councilor Dawes wants fixed and I agree with her. We do have to, we have to juggle our priorities and that's one area. We also should be encouraging our municipal partners to apply the room levy throughout the entire Yarmouth and Acadian Shores. So you are picking up Tropo Point, you're picking up Old Argyle and places like that. That's something we really should be revisiting in the new year, really. I mean, it's, it's a way to fund it, it's what they're doing in Cape Breton, it's what they're doing in other areas. Hours are limited to 20 rooms, I believe, Jeff?
That's it, yeah.
20 rooms, so it, it, make it right across the board. And that way, you're going to generate some good revenue that could be directed into tourism. It would lighten our load as a town, you know what I mean? Because really, tourism, and this is one of the things I said, your worship, when we're blowing up Destination, industry's got to fund itself. They cannot expect the taxpayers to be funding industry. I mean, we don't get involved with private, we don't promote drugstores, we don't promote restaurants, we don't promote, we don't do that, it's not our job. And there should be no responsibility, industry needs to look after themselves. I mean, we do, as a town. A town, we don't promote restaurants or, or private businesses. We don't, we don't advertise for Canadian Tire.
... twice a year with Lobster Splash and also...
Oh, yeah.
... Extravaganza. I have worked so hard to actually expand this Southwest Nova Smile...
Yeah.
... representing all of our...
Well, yeah, I mean, and, but...
... from Barrington all the way up to, oh, I'm embarrassed myself where I should have ...
Yeah. No, my, my point was, Councilor, individuals. We don't promote individual restaurants and stuff like that. I'm still on, but I'll turn off so you can go...
I demand to be heard.
Well, go ahead, be heard then.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor's up next and you, you have a response.
Yeah, just...
You have a response, let him respond.
If, 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 just on, just on the room levy, okay? So, so what's required to, to bring that down, to include everybody, is an amendment to the, the private members bill that became the Room Levy Act or the Marketing Promotions Act for Yarmouth. So it would require ourselves to approach the minister to, to amend that bill. Once that's done, we can amend our bylaw. Once our bylaw's amended, then they're required. So, a motion at council, at, at any opportunity at a council meeting, make that motion and we start the process. And we, we should, as you said, we should be talking. The municipality of Yarmouth does have a room levy exactly like ours, but they have no accommodations with 20 rooms, so, anymore. So, you know, I, I would expect they would probably jump on board, perhaps Argyle as well.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you were next and then Councilor Dawes.
Your worship, if it's, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget recommendations as we discussed this morning.
Is that appropriate now?
Well, I have, I have a question. I did make a couple of alter, alterations based on the discussion here, the 20, the 2,500 pulled out of the YASTA. Councilor McIsaac made a recommendation of putting that back in under tree planting. I didn't hear anybody else comment on that, so I didn't put it in. If you want it, put in, I mean, I'm looking for kind of some direction. And then, what, so what I would see at the end of this discussion, and it isn't at an end yet, but at the end of this discussion, a, a motion to recommend the budget to council, that would include these, these changes, would be appropriate. And so then at the, at the April 17 meeting, we would make the changes, bring the budget forward.
Okay, so...
That was my motion.
Okay. So can we just take that 2,500 and just put it in as extra? Doesn't matter to me, but, but it's, do you just take it out of the...
Unless we allocate it, it falls to the bottom line. It falls to the surplus.
Okay. All right.
Surplus is a great place for it.
Okay, so Councilor Dawes, your light's on, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to, to add on to what Councilor Landrell was saying about, what did you say about our restaurants not being...
That we don't individually support.
We don't individually support restaurants and over the last three, four, three, four years, I have been, we have been and I have personally been working very hard in, in, in increasing the, the Southwest Nova Smile of including our local restaurants, restaurateurs, our chefs, our food industry through the seafood and wine extravaganza, through the lobster splash and this, this smile. We've grown from, just, just, just from in-town and, and the municipality, all the way from Yarmouth, all the way down up to, up to Sonnyville and it is, and, and it's growing still. Also, a summer project is, is in the works. So we are doing anything and everything possible to get, get the word out about our, our culinary world here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mooney? Councilor Dennis? Sorry, I'm just, go ahead.
The $2,500 for YASTA, before we had two organizations, Destination, which is no longer, and YASTA. So, this is the year that we have the ferry. So we need marketing on this end of the province. Before, we had two, now we're down to one. So I don't see taking $2,500 out of YASTA to plant trees is the best bang for our buck. I think we really need to promote this year for the ferry, so, that's how I feel.
Thank you. Yeah, so, Lord Landrell?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Well, in a way, I disagree. Number one, YASTA will be getting, I suspect, a significant chunk of change from Nova Scotia Tourism Agency because with Destination imploding, there was a considerable sum of money that was going provincially to Destination. So those doors are going to be opening up and exciting doors especially would be the 50 cent dollar promotional monies that up until now was not made available as much as we would in this area. So, and the reality is, $2,500 isn't going to go very far in media. And I'm, I want to be very frank, I would love to see, you know, we, we're, we're right now pouring in 130,000 into Yarmouth and Acadian Shores every year. That's roughly what's going in. That's a fair chunk of change. Now, I'm curious this year, because we don't know if that's money well-spent or not. Over the last two or three years, there has not been a growth in tourism travel to Yarmouth. In fact, it's been quite the opposite in some cases. There's been some stability, but not a lot. The Yarmouth 250th, which I will comment, YASTA was not supportive of, did bring in a lot of visitors to Yarmouth. And I'm thinking that was very good, but we, we leveraged money from the province and there was leveraging going on. Yarmouth and Acadian Shores has a specific theme. It is Yarmouth and Acadian Shores. We have one partner reducing its involvement, and that's Claire. And then we have, but they have to promote the entire region. To me, as Councilor Dawes commented with the lobster splash and with the seafood extravaganza, and I work with her on both of those, we've done a lot to market our own direct community here individually, Yarmouth itself as a destination, whereas Yarmouth and Acadian Shores tends to want to promote the region as a, as a whole, which is wonderful, the whole loop idea. The 2,500, I would personally like to see go back to grants to organizations. Sitting around this table, we get hit a lot with organizations who are struggling. Right now, money is tight. Not only is it tight tax-wise, but it's tight, tight from a business perspective and those companies that used to sponsor, every time we lose a small store, we lose a major corporate sponsor because you could, companies are larger chain stores, are larger stores that are part of networks, have a very straightforward policy, $25, $50, that's it, they don't go anymore. Gone are the days of the Dicky Shapiro, who would shallow a lot of money. Gone are the days where you would have individual stores that would be huge sponsors to your community because corporate, under these corporate companies, they just can't do it. They're restricted by their own company policies and they only give out such and such. So personally, I think we need to prop up those grants to organizations, I really do. 2,500 is not a lot of money, but there's that 2,500 readily available. I have yet to see a YASTA budget. I have yet to see accountability of the extra 47,000 that we gave YASTA last year special for marketing. We were told here, they came in the door, and we were told here that the former ED told us that this has to be done, has to be done, we have to do it, have to do it, have to do it. I don't know where that money went. So we had 47,000 plus the 60 we gave last year, plus the 70, so in all, and the CAO can correct me, I think the total YASTA bill that we, from this town was over $200,000. That's a lot of change. Now, if that was marketed and leveraged with the province, 400,000 should have come out in advertising. Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you, you go on the YASTA website, you're in for a shock, the thing is hardly updated. And I'm going to tell you, there needs to be some major promotional stuff done here. Today, this morning, I picked up my Chronicle Herald. There's a new weekly paper, freebie, coming out in the Chronicle Herald, I guess going to try to compete with the Vanguard. This is the second one I've seen. Not one story about Yarmouth. Not one story about Yarmouth. The thing is full of Shelburne. Shelburne's got right on the bandwagon. So my point is, is that 2,500, I think we need to look at where our money is being spent now before we start adding money to a pot. So my recommendation is put it back to grants to organizations.
The, the So Shore piece, I haven't, I haven't read it yet, but anyway, I just met with them this past week and we'll be in there. We'll be in there. Go ahead, Councilor Mooney.
I agree with Councilor Landrell. Like I said, we had the former director of YASTA came in here and she said she needed a set amount of money to do marketing for the boat coming in. We fulfilled our obligation, I think, with the other municipal units. That $2,500 was not in the YASTA budget, that was going to Destination. Let's keep it here in the town of Yarmouth and I know there's going to be, because of the boat coming, there's going to be numerous organizations and clubs coming to the town of Yarmouth looking for support and I think that $2,500 will be better advertising money within the town of Yarmouth than it would be giving it to those people. And just adding what, what Counselor, Counselor Dawes said about supporting and promoting restaurants in southwestern Nova Scotia, that's a reason to look at the room levy and go beyond the borders of the town of Yarmouth. We're spending, I know with the municipality of Yarmouth last year and the year before, they're spending money supporting restaurants in their, in their municipality, we're supporting restaurants in Barrington. We have to look beyond our borders and we have to get that bed and breakfast money. We have to get that money and put it all in the pot and that, you know, that could bring that 70,000 with the, with the increase of the boat this year, that could bring it to, bring it to $100,000, then you're a major player. But the $2,500, I like to keep that in-house and I have no problems bringing it back to grants to organizations.
Okay, so let, let me ask this, on a $16 million budget, most of the conversation is on $2,500. Absolutely ridiculous, but does anybody here disagree that it could go into grants to organizations? Is there anybody...
I disagree.
Okay, go ahead.
I feel it should go into surplus. Surplus is where, where unallocated money can eventually be allocated and everyone knows that our door, our allocation door is always being knocked on. I have some other things that I would like to bring up, but not at this time, I'm just answering your question. Thank you, I'll, I'll put my light on again later.
Councilor Mooney?
You know, Murray Judge told me a good story when he first got elected and I think you were, were you on the first council with Mr. Judge?
Yeah.
When it came to, I think, building either the waste treatment plant or building the, the water treatment plant out in Lake George, he talked about a six or eight million dollar project and the thing got voted on in, in less than a minute and then they talked about putting flowers, so we're talking about $8 million, it took one minute to discuss, and they're talking about putting flowers in the triangle out on the Haley Road and Stares Road and they took two and a half hours talking about a $150 project. You know, you're going to put road to dendrum roses, what are you going to put? You're going to put a bush out there? Anyways, I think the $2,500, let's put it back to grants to organizations, we're talking about a $17 million budget. And I know guaranteed that there's going to be organizations, groups or individuals coming in here to look for financial support, for a tournament, for a convention, for a anything else, you know, for a family reunion, a large family reunion. We have the big one next year with the, with the Scottish Family Reunion, coming to, coming to Nova Scotia and coming to Yarmouth. There's going to be ample opportunity. And to, I think we should just allocate it, put it back to grants to organizations and guess what, at the end of the year, if it's not spent, it will go back in surplus. So we don't have to worry about that part and like we said, if there's an organization that comes and we've spent 80,000 over $80,000, guess what? We're tapped out, man.
Okay, so, everybody's not agreeing, so...
I think Counselor MacLeod's got a vote on the budget, but I'd like to make an amendment that we take the $2,500 and put it to grants to organizations.
Well, you're, Counselor MacLeod's was not...
It was a motion.
But it wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded, so if you want to take care of this first, then we've got the full package, is that sensible? Go ahead, go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, ideally, ideally one motion, you know, figure it out. This is, this is, this is your work, right? This is your work, figure it out and then, and then make, make the motion to recommend it to council.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the budget with the $2,500 allocated to grants to organizations and present the budget as presented with that change.
Okay.
Second motion.
Hold it. Yeah. No, I'm just saying that, that, that we need that united, we want to make sure we're all on the same page. Do you want to make two motions? Do you want to first allocate the 2,500?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there is, so you seconded it.
Both of them, please.
Okay, all right.
So, so the motion includes the discussion, are we going to put the...
Yes, it does.
But the motion to approve the budget for...
But that's in there as well, that's...
For, for council approval in April, the April meeting is there.
Yeah, it's, it's, I just said...
Let's, let's do it, let's do it.
I just said two because it's nice to have everybody on the same page for the budget.
I think you can get it out. Would you want to...
Should use this time though.
Well, seriously.
That's right.
Okay. The motion's on the floor.
We're only going to do the...
Any further discussion?
The motion was, recall please.
The motion is to, to...
To approve the budget, to include 2,500 or rank in the 2,500 budget with the grants to organizations.
Yeah, so we're approving the budget?
Yep, let's go.
Basically, okay.
Question, question.
Phil's...
I'm sorry.
Light's still on. Do you, are you asking a question? I just need to know if you're asking a question. Okay.
No.
Sorry, but we may as well get it out.
It's possible that there may be one person voting against the budget for that reason.
That's why I said...
And normally, and normally in budget, we'd like to be, show 100% agreement.
Yeah.
So, we have to find a way around that and my comment is, leave it the way it was if we're going to get a nay vote on the, on the budget.
That, you'll get my vote for.
Wait, wait a second.
Let him talk.
We need 100% support. We leave, leave it the way it was, we'll deal with that item later.
Is that your motion?
No.
No, 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 it's not my motion.
No.
No.
He's just discussing, but we can't...
I'm just making a, making a back-and-forth comment.
Motion on the floor, recording.
Yeah.
The motion's including both, it's $2,500, but we need, we'd like to have the 100% support. That's why, but doesn't, it is what it is.
I don't want to go against it, so...
I, I agree with Jim, but I really have a problem with 2,500 staying in YASTA. When that money was allocated for an organization, the intent of this council was to put that money into Destination which was going. And I have an issue with that money going there.
We can change it later, can we?
Once it's in a budget, Jim, you know how it works, it's cut and stone, we're not going to change it and that's my problem. YASTA's going to be looking for a check for $62,500 and that's bottom, bottom line. I mean, I, I cannot support that because that money I voted for, for a specific project and we're now giving it to an organization that has not requested that money and it's above the amount of formula that we do with our partners and I have an issue with that.
Your worship.
Yeah, go ahead. Certainly.
So, with the exception of this particular line item, I'll just put that back to 5,000 for, for now.
Okay.
The, based on the discussion we had earlier, the YASTA item, I believe, has been adjusted down by 2,500. So as it sits right now...
Yeah, we took it in.
If you were to accept the recommendation, yes, it would be at 60. So the 2,500 is out based on the discussion here earlier, okay? The, the discussion has been, okay, so if we take the 2,500 out of YASTA, do we put it back in tree planting, do we put it back into grants to organizations, or do we let it fall to the bottom line?
To the bottom line, that's why this is on.
And so, I, that, that's what you're discussing. As far as I, as far as what's here, if you were to accept the recommendation as it is right now...
Yes.
It includes these reductions, which is 2,500 off of YASTA, so $60,000 would go to YASTA. Now, I also understand that we want, that we want, I guess, parity between the partners in terms of our contributions to YASTA. So I would not be inclined to write the check for $60,000 until I knew that our partners in YASTA were also contributing $60,000 and if they weren't, that changes the water on the beans, we come back and we talk about it again. So it isn't just going to be that we start writing the checks, but if everybody else is in with 60,000, that check would go.
Okay.
So I understand there's a condition around that, it is a partnership.
All right. Councilor Mooney, go ahead.
Question on the floor.
Okay, the question on the floor is, is putting the 2,500 into the grants to organizations.
That's right. There's a motion made, question is called.
Okay. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. One, one...
Okay, so that motion was to recommend the budget to council and so that concludes, unless there's another motion, but that would conclude your budget deliberations.
That's...
Right, so the grants to organizations would be at 77,500 instead of 80, okay? So that package will be put together, circulated to you and it would come forward at the April 17 council meeting.
Councilor Landrell?
Thank you, your worship. Great and a great job, Jeff, just to my colleagues. Now if this is done, the deal is done, if we are going to change the deal, could we Now, if this is done, the deal is done, if we are going to change the deal, could we at least have a special meeting and not be caught out the last, at the last minute at a council meeting? Um, I, I think if somebody has got an issue, they want to do something with it, or jiggle something around, let's call a special meeting, let's make that agreement among us that we'll call a special meeting to do that, rather than at the time of the vote, we get into a, a public discussion, which is fine, all our meetings are public anyway, but, um, I'd much rather do it at a special meeting and have, because, and go to the floor with this concretely, and I, I, I think that would be best. So I would make that commitment.
Thank you. Counselor, uh, McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. You're talking about a special meeting for what, to discuss the 2,500 dollars?
He's just saying if, if, before we get to the council meeting, if somebody say, you know what, there's just something wrong with this, can we talk about it? Let's just, let's discuss.
Okay, well, you know, people's not going to be happy all the time. I, I thought this, this process went great. Uh, I mean, motions, motions on the floor, things went the way it was, and not everybody's going to get what they want, that's just the way it is, nature of the beast. Uh, you know, I remember, I wasn't happy one time, a few years ago, and I voted against the budget. I was the only one, but, big deal, I mean, budget still passed. So Jeff, am I wrong by saying the $2,500 in this motion is going to grants to organizations? And that's passing the budget along with that, is that correct?
So the, the proposal initially this afternoon was to reduce grants to organizations from 80 to 75. So the motion that was just passed reduces it only to 77, 50.
Okay.
77, 5.
77, 5.
Yeah.
So that 25 goes back in there.
Right.
Good, that's what I wanted. Thank you, your worship, and thank you for your patience.
No patience, it's good. It was, um, I, I got to say, I mean, everybody at the table said it, but wow, excellent job. I think I learned more this time than, and like Ken, I, I went through line by line, and I'm glad I did, because I, I learned a lot, I learned a lot. So thank you very much. So what's next there, CAO?
Well, just, if I may, and not, not to be spraying sunshine around, but I, from Jerry and I, from our perspective, uh, this budget process has been perhaps the best that we've, that we've gone through in terms of, you know, working with your priorities, working with you guys, and you put in some long hours, and not only that, even at the 11th hour, you put in long hours, and, and not just yourself and Counselor Langer, Counselor Dawes came with, uh, copious questions, and, uh, Deputy Mayor was in to visit me, and, and, you know, I'm sure everybody took a hard look at the budget and, uh, gave it a lot of your time, and, and it deserves it, and it makes it certainly worthwhile from our perspective to, to spend the extra time, uh, on the process when we know that you're as engaged as you have been this time, so thank you for that.
Okay, so now we're at the next, does anybody need five minutes?
Yeah, sorry, um, just before, if, if, um, Jerry would like to collect the binder so that we can insert the, the amended pages in time for the 17th.
Perfect, and then can we just have five minutes, three minutes? You got to come back here anyway and all that jazz, and I'll grab my binder.
Richard, where are we today?
They, 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 Jerry, I'm going to answer the question, and yeah, I'm raising it, and I'm going to say it's why, I don't know why it's not.
Here you go, Jer. Huh?
And, uh, from Saturday to Sunday night, I, so, by Sunday night, I just told them, you know what, I, I haven't got the answers. Hold on, hold on, I'm going to read this. That one, I know. Okay, do you have the revenue numbers from the Southern Coast soil?
That is the 4,000.
That's what, oh, 4,000.
Yeah, that's the composter, that's compost, that's like.
I know, you covered that.
Yeah.
You covered that that day.
They're paying us, this is our revenue. We do the most.
All right, now, next question. Uh, other legislative expenditure expenditures? Oh, was, it wasn't, wasn't, wasn't anticipated?
I wasn't anticipating.
Last year was 2, 2,000.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those things I.
What kind of, what, what kind of expenses? Just give them two examples, so.
What? We don't walk on water?
You had one on maintenance, and that was, uh, for this air control, and that was the, uh.
Yes, here. Air control maintenance.
I wrote it down on what?
Oh God, who knows which way the wind blows from one moment to the next.
Yeah, there was a circular pump that way.
That's to be done, that's to be done. And the accounting software, I know that's a capital.
Yep.
Yeah. Fine, we're done. All my stickies? Sir.